...a solid meditation and pledge to the flag and also keep our thoughts in with Doug Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. It's 10 o'clock. It's June 11th, 2025, and we have two county commissioners here, and I have half a voice, so please bear with me. The meeting is now called to order, and we will start with consents and approvals from the county administrative. Good morning.
Good morning. We have two exonerations for $398.23, minutes for June 4th, 2025. Vouchers, General County, $136,173.83. Cole Severance, $2,400. magistrate court, $68.96. 911, $254. Chestnut Ridge Park, $24,023.65. Camp Muffley, $46,009,6426. Mason Dixon Park, $2,0161.35. Mon County Center, $502.64. Opioid settlement funds, $14,674. County fire protection, $7,706.58. Such as valuation, $6,557.43. Payroll, $1,921,533.36. ARPA, $407,684.12. Parks and Rec, $32,034.414. Purchasing card, General County, $13,786.05. Chestnut Ridge Park, $499.66. Mason Dixon Park, $89.85. Such as valuation, $25,186.85. ARPA, $4,155 for a voucher total of $2,646,765.73. We have budget revisions that require state approval for the general fund, prosecuting attorney, federal grants, state grants, law enforcement, juvenile detention, day report center, in-house approval for general funds, circuit clerk, sheriff's tax office, jail, non-reimbursable home confinement, and parks. Position vacancies for boards and authorities as listed on your website, and fiduciary orders for June 11th, 2025.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We do not have any fiduciaries, correct?
Well, not, you don't have anything...
Additional.
Additional. Thank you. Okay. Introduce you to new employees. Again, our favorite, you service the center. Regina Taylor, relief worker, part-time.
You pretty much said it all. Her first date of employment is today. She is part-time, not eligible for benefits at $14.40 per hour.
I move that we approve the personnel as presented.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other?
No, that's all.
Okay. At this time, we'll do comments from the public. Is there anyone who'd be interested in come down and speak to us? Please feel free to come down, state your name, your address, and we'd love to hear from you. Is there anyone? Going once? Going twice? Nope. Okay. We have no one from the comments from the public. Do we have any grants?
No.
Okay. Moving to correspondence.
None. Do us have any?
I have one. I just sent to you all. It was concerns about John Poole Road. This morning, I talked with Earl Gaskins to find out exactly what part of the road is the state and what part of the road is not the state, and I just sent them back information, and I sent it to you all too, so you're aware of it, okay? They are going to fix the culvert on the road, but the other part of the road that goes into the trailer course zone is not part of the state route.
This is titled Woodcrest Village.
Yeah.
That's the same?
I guess John Poole Road goes into...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So they will... Yes, thank you. I assume it is, because that's how I've been talking to them, but that is, the road is the correct road, the 624, whatever. It says county, yes.
I'll take your word on it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. No unfinished business, new business. Here we go. Consideration of proposal provided by Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield for county employee group insurance effective August 1, 2025. How do you want to proceed?
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and make a move that we approve the proposal as presented and then have some discussion.
Okay, it's properly moved, and I'll second it. Okay? I'll refer it over to you, Sean.
Of course, anybody who's been paying attention knows that we've been working on this for the past six months. The first offer that we had out the door from Highmark was a 34.8% increases. That's with no plan changes. The basis of that is a point in time rolling average that shows our loss ratio of 123.5. That's the actual claims over premium, so basically where they're paying 123% more than they're collecting in premiums. They're claiming about 23% more than they're collecting in premiums. Same period last year was 118%, 118.3, and the previous year is 104.3. So this is something we've been dealing with. Every year, we've been making small tweaks and some big tweaks. Last year, we made a big change where we brought on an IRA.
HRA.
HRA, and increased the deductibles from, to $6,000 and $12,000 for family, and commission took on the responsibility of about 85% of those deductibles to get the premiums down. We were a little surprised this year. We were right back at the same point with, you know, another high double-digit increase. And one of the problems we're dealing with is our experience in claims is what's driving our cost, and there's nothing we can do about that. It's really just what they call, what they call in the industry is the group dilemma. Having the group, these group plans, every year when you go to, if we put it out to bid or we ask for a new proposal, we're paying for our experience, and all that information is known and all that information is out there. And we have, we have a small portion of our participants that account for nearly 50%, 60% of all of our claims, and those aren't, those aren't going away. So we really struggled with how to do this. We get a lot of feedback, a lot of criticism as far as the plan changes that we decide on to try to minimize this for our employees, and our overall goal is to minimize the impact to our employees while still be fiduciary stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. So then we kept going back and forth with the insurance company, making tweaks. The second offer we had was 29.96, so it really didn't drop it down. We made some small tweaks to co-insurance, just taking it from 90% now to 80%. Next offer came in about 29.79 with an increase to deductibles, so we changed the $6,000, $12,000 deductible to $714. That only brought us a small little decrease. The next offer and the one that we've kind of zeroed in on was a 20.28% increase, which has an increase in deductibles and an increase in co-insurance. So we did do a couple more rounds, but we came back to that one as probably being the best one going forward. So there are changes to the plan. The deductible is now $7,000, $14,000, and co-insurance is changing from 90% to 80%. If we kept the same 95%, 95, 90 ratio that we currently pay for our employees' premiums, the employees would still see a 20.48% increase in their premiums. If we split those costs, we'd have single employees who'd see a 200% increase, and all the other employees see a 100% increase. So we, that was not palatable to us. As we've discussed in a couple different work sessions, we've been looking at other options going forward. We're not ready for those options right now, but we're still exploring. But we're ready to move forward because we have to. We're under the gun to get this approved and then start the open enrollment process because our open enrollment starts August 1.
No, July.
Well, the new plan starts August 1.
Oh, right, correct.
So we had to get all those other things in place.
Right.
So that's all, that's all the bad news. Again, we're really struggling to try to figure out an option that, one, gives people the insurance plan that they need, but also keeps their costs low. So I have two corollary motions that I'd like to make after we go ahead and take care of approving the proposal. So the proposal is to accept the increases at the 28.48%, and that's at the overall county level.
Yeah. I think the concern is that the three commissioners have tried all different options. When we looked at, and I thought I was really surprised, people said, well, why don't we do self-insurance? And if we did the plan that we had done, what was stated was we would have paid this amount, plus at this time, we would have to come up with another $2.3 million. Because, so that was not, we've looked at all different options, and Blue Cross Blue Shield and Highmark made it very clear that the trend is not going to go down. It's going to go up. And didn't they say the actuary was actually 44%?
Yeah.
So I want to, could you explain that because that's really important?
They had their underwriters do an independent analysis on what our increase should be expected to be, and that number was 46.3%.
Right.
So that's just looking at, you know, from the insurance carrier's perspective, this is what you can actually charge and still be able to back it up with data, was the 46% increase. Due to Highmark wanting our business and wanting to continue our business, that's how we're able to actually, that 46 wasn't a 46%, it was a 34%.
Right.
Initial offer, and then with some tweaks to the, to the, to the plan, we were able to get that down to the 28, or the 20% increase that we currently see.
And before I close the discussion, I want to clear, when you put a 46%, let's just say, in numbers, that means roughly in two and a half years, we would be doubling the cost for insurance.
Correct.
And that is just not realistic. That's not acceptable, and we have to look at other options. And as you said, we are still, we want to move forward with this program, but we are still going to keep open-minded and other options as we go forward. So with that, I call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so that was to accept the Highmark proposal?
That gives us the plan.
Yeah, to accept the Highmark proposal. The corollary proposals I would like to propose is to keep the employee premiums consistent with where they are now, so therefore, the commission would eat the potential $1,1,805 in additional premium cost.
Okay, I'll second that, meaning that the commission is basically picking up the increase.
Correct.
Of the cost.
Of the increase.
Anything else?
And as I explained, if, even if we kept it at the employees' current level, where we fund 95% of single employees and 90% of all other plans, they would have still had a 20.4% increase in their premiums. And if we shared, those numbers were 200% for single employees and 100% for everybody else, so...
Okay, so it's been properly moved. And second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have one more.
The other part of that is, as I indicated, we have an increased deductible. That deductible goes from seven to $7,000 for single employees, $14,000 for, for family. I would move that we, the commission, cover 100% of those deductibles.
Second, if you want to just explain that a little clearer so?
So the employees essentially won't have any deductibles. They'll, I mean, they have a $7,000 deductible, but it'll all be covered out of the HRA, $7,000 and $14,000.
Okay, so we're not, okay, so not just the increase, we're picking up all the deductibles?
Correct.
Right, okay. Okay, it's been properly moved. And second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And again, people need to understand, we're not done. The overall goal of this commission is to keep the employee cost constant, if not lower, but also to do the same thing for the county. So we're continuing to, there'll be other possible changes and other tweaks in the future.
And just to clarify, just, and the reason why I will support is, this is not sustainable. This cannot continue, and that is why we are looking at other options and proposals as we move forward, and I think that's very clear. I want to appreciate your guidance, Renata, your guidance, and also the help from, is it IDS?
USI.
USI, I, USI, who have really worked diligently to get it down from what could have been initially a 46% increase to a 33%, so down to those numbers. We're not done yet.
Yeah, for the public's benefit, USIs are, in shorts, brokers, which they, every year, they work tirelessly to find options. They did bid this out.
Yes.
They did look at other plans. They looked at stop-loss plans. They looked, we turned over every rock to trying to find opportunities to, to fix this issue. But it's a, it's a statewide, it's a national issue. We're talking with other commissioners in other counties that are struggling with this. So we're certainly going to keep looking at all of our options, but I really do thank you for mentioning USI, Joe Powell, and Leanne Vogts, and the new girl. I forgot her name already. She's only in one meeting, but...
Laura Holden.
Okay.
Laura with a last name.
Sorry, sorry if we didn't specifically mention your name, but...
But they do need to be, I mean, because they have worked hard and even taken our phone calls at all different times of the day and hours, say, okay, we want to try and tweak this. What would this be? What would that be? But...
Yeah, we think we get a lot of criticism.
Yeah.
There's, we do, we do, about health insurance, but they, they get an awful lot of criticism on our behalf, and all they're doing is trying to help us find solutions, so I really do appreciate their support.
Okay, well, thank you. This has been a multi-monthly project, and it isn't done yet, I can tell you. Okay, is there anything else you want to talk, or can I move? May I move on? Okay.
You're president.
B, consideration of a request from the Claybattel Public Service District for funding assistance.
Did they vote? Did you guys vote on that last motion?
I don't think I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you didn't vote on the last.
I apologize. Okay. We haven't voted, so all those in favor of...
Aye.
Aye. I thought we did, but it...
So to be clear, we took three, three votes. One was to approve the Highmark plan.
Right.
Two was to approve keeping the premiums constant and the commission eating the one point, the $1,1,000, whatever, 805 amount increase in premiums. And the third one was to, based off the increasing deductibles for the commission to cover 100% of the deductibles through the HRA.
Correct. Through the HRA, okay. Thank you, sorry. B, consideration of a request from the Claybattel Public Service District for funding assistance with the repair of two fire hydrants near Claybattel High School.
The total ask is 3,000, I'm sorry, $4,463.
For two hydrants.
For two hydrants, yeah. They're having trouble getting parts for some of the older ones, so they've had to do some Frankenstein work, but...
I move that we approve funding in an amount of $4,463 for repair of two hydrants at the Claybattel, at the Claybattel High School.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consideration approved and signed the software license agreement renewal between the Mon County Commission, Amelia Technologies, for the smart rec e-commerce platform for the Mon County Parks and Recreational Department.
It's a renewal.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the software license agreement as presented.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any other new business? Do we have any reports from elected officials and/or department heads? Anything? Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, we'll move to, almost conclude with reports from the county commissioners. Sean?
It's a shame that you lost your voice this week, Tom, so I'm sure you have a lot to talk about. It has been an interesting week since last week, last, after last week's meeting, we had our regular, actually, our update with Chaplain Road was canceled. But Friday, we had staff reports, and the administrator and I had a call with the building commission chair regarding a property that they are marketing on our behalf. Sunday through Tuesday, Commissioner Bloom, our administrator, and myself, we're at the County Commission Association of West Virginia Annual Conference. It was a very productive couple of days. During those couple of days, there was a, I think there was some sort of announcement, I'm not really sure what about, by the governor on Monday, that kind of threw that whole conference into turmoil, and also has been talked about a lot in the last couple of days. Today's a regular day, one work session, and then we have our Chaplain Hill call at this afternoon. Tomorrow, right?
Yes, sorry, I know, it's back on.
Tomorrow, I have a MAP Executive Board meeting, Red Team, Development Authority, and then I'll be traveling to Roanoke for the WV Corp Risk Board meeting. Those meetings will continue on to Friday. I do want to congratulate the W baseball team on a great season. It was a tough task to go into Baton Rouge and play a pretty formidable team. I think they did us proud. They didn't give up, and, you know, looking forward to even bigger and better things next year. Every year, we allocate money for a regional. Next year, I hope we have to allocate money for a regional and a superregional, because I can't help but wonder what a difference like having that event would be here in Mon County. I think they'd had to close down University Town Center. They'd have people just standing in the roads watching that game, so hopefully, maybe next year. So I'm sure the mayor would have liked to have that superregional. We did, and thanks to Renata for all your work on the health insurance project. It's still ongoing. We got a lot, lot to do to try to find a more permanent solution going forward, but I really appreciate all your work, all the work of the commission, and all the work on the contribution from our consultants. Tom's probably going to talk a little bit about roads. I do want to say I really appreciate the administration talking our language when they say they're moving towards a data-driven approach to allocating funding for road projects. We've been, we've been screaming that for years. I mean, go back to Delegate Statler's attempt to change the funding formula. We don't even know what the funding formula is specifically, and we don't even know what, you know, what the end result of that formula is. But we've been doing things like what they're now suggesting for years. Exit 155 is, 153 is a perfect example. That interchange was completely built with stiff proceeds and was paid back years early. And there was money left over from that project that we were able to start planning exit 155. So we've been working on 155 for eight years on, on behalf of the Department of Highway, doing a lot of the planning and stuff for them, costs that they wouldn't have to bear. But you look at other things we do, like our orphan road program, to, again, to help fix problems that aren't going to be fixed anywhere else. Our discretionary fund for special projects, look at the work we've been able to do by throwing a few dollars in to access the secretary's discretionary fund to get projects like River Road acceptable, to get Chaplain Hill acceptable, those type of things. So there's a laundry list of things that we've already been doing, and I hope that Charleston looks to our example and, as to how, how we move forward. Again, we don't just provide a laundry list of problems and say, we want you to fix this. We always bring every problem, every problem we bring to the table, we bring a solution. And I think that's what we've been used to doing. And just from a perspective, and this isn't, I want to be careful, like when we were at the conference, we were talking with a lot of our other county brothers and sisters that, you know, there was a fear that, oh, this means that I'm going to lose this project or I'm going to lose that project. No, it doesn't mean that necessarily. It just means that each of us may have to figure out creative ways to work with the Department of Highways to make those projects happen. And here in Mon County, we're not being selfish by wanting, you know, our fair share. This county, this county by itself is like 9.15 of the state GDP. Our district is 20% of the state GDP. Now, there's 10 districts, so we're pulling more than twice our weight when it comes to actual, you know, commerce, which drives those, those gas taxes and the funding that benefits the whole state. So if you do more to, to address the areas where the commerce is happening and is expanding, then you do more to help all the state. So I think it's a, it's a win-win for everybody if you just focus dollars where, honestly, they need to be focused. So I really appreciate all their, their efforts and now talking like they're going to go in this direction. So again, we'll have to get into the details as project by project as far as what they're talking about and what they're looking to do, but I certainly hope that whatever, whatever their metrics is or whatever their, their methodology is for dealing with projects, that they're consistent across all 55 counties. And because we certainly, you know, we want to lead by example, but we also want everybody else to follow by the same rules, and that's all we've been saying for, for years. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Yes, two issues I want to bring up. First of all, I thought, I didn't think going to this West Virginia associate counties meeting was going to be as eventful as it became, and a lot happened, and good and bad, as you would, you would say. Let's start with the first thing. We had the treasurer and the First Foundation's board members at our meeting, and I was able to speak, voicing my concern of our region four, and surprisingly afterwards, many of the regions stated the same thing, which is, as the MOU reads in the First Foundation agreement, there's an, there's a board that reviews the applications. Then there shall be a second board, which is comprised of different representatives that the counties select. We are not doing that. Their process is saying that since we chose the individual to be on the board, he got to choose those individuals. That means that's how the county was involved in that. And we tried to explain that more eyes on the applications, more consideration of smaller counties who may need the funding, and we in Mon County may not know what Upstate County wants, so we were able to get that across. The second was, the governor showed up surprisingly to our meeting, and I was fortunate to talk with him for about 10 minutes alone, and let's, let's say the greatest thing that happened, which is he point-blank said, which we have not heard since Senator, when Governor Manchin was, you have been underfunded in this area for years. We need to make that change. And to me, that was 50% of our problem, just admitting that there was a problem. And he wanted to come up with different creative ideas, as Sean said, but that's how he first started it. Then the next day, I attended the meeting, and my first comment, as much as, I want to congratulate Ben Conley. Not only was his article exceptional, and I sent it to all the counties, but then the one today. So the two articles really did a great job in clarifying what is going on. And my comment, even after reading that as well, he began with something that shocked us all. He admitted that the $1.2 billion that the Roads Prosperity had has all been spent, and there is a interest payment of $120 million a year that we have to come up with. That is how it began. He then also stated that the federal government made it clear that if they didn't make changes at the level of the, at the West Virginia DOH, we would be losing funds. The third thing, he said he wanted to be a little more transparent, and there now is a website that has the list of the five or six years of bridges and roads of what they're preparing to do. So those are all great things that I really... of what they're preparing to do. So those are all great things that I really think are important, that he was saying what we had been talking about. Now, where the question and concern is, and we're trying to find out more information, what does it mean that he wants the partnership with the counties, the state, and the federal government to come up with programs? We believe that the TIF project is clearly one of the ones, whether it's Harmony Grove, when we got to meet with the undersecretary and the secretary, they did not realize how substantial the TIF project was in getting and reimbursing the state, and that was key. So that really opened the doors for us. We are hoping that, as Sean said, data-driven. We have been saying that for years. Come up to an area where there's economic growth, and don't just say, "Okay, because there's economic growth, you don't need to repair the roads. You don't need new roads." And I want to give a shout-out again to Mike Olivero, who said, "Yes, we need maintenance of the roads, but we also need funding for new economic development roads." We are in the heart, right now, of Harmony Grove, exit one fifty-five, which we want to get really clear. Exit one fifty-five is a bridge that is failing. The intersection is failing. So it isn't just new bridges for economic development. It is to fix what we have and also help the economic development. And then we have the third bridge that they were building for the industrial park. I believe, as Sean said, we're very excited to be a part of this future. I believe he wants to meet with us, and, you know, a lot of times, people talk a lot, but he publicly said what we have been saying and verified what we have been talking about for years. And for that, we have... We may have our differences, and maybe that's why my vote is... My voice is like this, because the governor may have put something in the water, so I can't talk that much. Jokingly, please joke. That's a joke, please. But we're very excited to work with the governor. We want to move forward. What's in the past is in the past. We have to deal with the present and the future, and I think it's very positive. And I agree with Sean and the others. And again, I do want to thank Ben for great articles, because no one would have believed it unless he actually said it and it was covered. So that is all I have. I know it was more than I should have said, but... Do we have a motion?
I moved to adjourn.
Second, we be gone.